Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us here today. As we meet with our school board candidates. Who are running for the at-large seat. I am Karen Campbell and I am the political action committee chair and we are here. With our candidates and members of our leadership team and our moderators, but before we start. I wanted to just do a really quick run through. I know you are seeing this on a loop. But there's some very important details that I want to make sure. That everybody understands. So I'm going to go ahead. And share my screen one more time and kind of explain these slides. In a little bit more detail and then we'll move over to. Our facilitated discussions. So again, thank you for joining us here for our candidate forum. The program that we're going to follow today is. We're going to do a brief program overview, which is what I'm doing right now. Talk about the rules of engagement for both the candidates, but also for attendees. Our facilitated discussion section is going to be moderated by Dr. Sujatha Hampton and our president, Michelle Wheat. And we are going to also ask during the program. If anybody has any questions to put it in the chat, you'll send it directly to the host and. Jennifer Bond, who's a member of our political action committee will be moderating, monitoring the question and answer. And we will try and get as many of the questions submitted answered. But we will then pull questions from the audience. Then. We will give the candidates an opportunity to do a wrap up and then we'll end the program at 3:30. But there's some very important dates that I'd like everybody to be aware of. For our primary and it looks, I don't know if you're seeing parts of it maybe cut off, so I'll. Speak this out directly. There's some important dates that we have to remember. As you know, we are in a primary. Our election day for the primaries June 20. If you haven't registered or updated your registration, if you moved or anything like that, this is the time to do it. The last day to do so is May 30. However, as you know, Virginia is allowing same-day registration for the primary on June 20. But it's a lot better to get all of this paperwork done and figure it out and complete before June 20. We are currently in early voting, so you can go and vote for using the primary ballot. And that early voting ends June 17 and then election day for the primary is June 20. And so I just want to make sure that we go over this and. NAACP just went through a recent strategic change and we updated our mission statement. And I just wanted to make sure that we shared it with our members and allies and partners who are on the webinar with us today. So I'll just read it out in detail verbatim right now. Our mission is to achieve equity, political rights and social inclusion. By advancing policies and practices that expand human and civil rights, eliminate discrimination. And accelerate the well-being, education and economic security of black people and all persons of color. And so the focus of our questioning today is what the candidate will be able to do if. They are elected in as an at-large member of the Fairfax County Public School. How will they be able to govern in accordance with the NAACP mission? Okay, so right now, rules of engagement. Right now, we have muted everyone. Only the. Presenters and moderators and our candidates are able to unmute themselves. However. We want to make sure that we're able to hear from you. So as I said earlier. Just go ahead and put your question in the chat. We will make sure that if we, that we can ask it here today. But we will also compile questions and send it to the candidates after the candidate forum, so they will be able to see your questions either way. And of course, we're here. Okay, and so we're here for the at-large school board candidate forum. At two. And these are the candidates whom we'll be speaking with today. Lawrence Webb, Ilian Moon, Kyle McDaniel, Hamid Munir and Ryan McAlvin. And they have their website below. If you want to take a picture of the screen and you can always. Go back to it at a later time and pull up the website and be able to find out more details about the candidates we'll be speaking with today. Later on today at four, we will be just meeting with our Mount Vernon School Board candidates. Harold Sims and Mateo Dunn. And then on the 15th, we'll be speaking with the Hunter Mill School Board candidates. And that is Paul Thomas and Melanie Mearon. And I'm going to stress this. I want to emphasize this. The reason which the, the candidate forums that we are presenting at this time. Are only contested races. We are not speaking with those who have already received an endorsement and are guaranteed a spot on the November ballot. After the June 20th primary, we will be having candidate debates and other opportunities. For us to meet with candidates who will be. On the November, the general election ballot. So this is only for contested races. The remaining contested races for the school board. Other candidates have already received endorsements and are guaranteed, as I said, a position on the ballot. And so this is a message from our planning team. Thank you so much for joining us. And I would also like to just kind of reiterate the. The rules of engagement for our candidates that are here with us today. And I'll just go back to, I don't know why this keeps happening. I see, I did skip over a slide. Okay, so the rules of engagement for a candidate. We will have two minutes for you to introduce yourselves. Then we'll have a series of pre-prepared questions, which you will have a minute to respond. We'll have a lightning round. It's going to be really quick of yes or no quest, yes or no questions. And then we will start taking questions from the audience. And then again, you'll have a minute to respond to that. We, as I, we reserve the right to any candidate that goes over there allotted time and we will. Have a, we have a timer screen, which you should be able to see that. That's going to give you a countdown. But if you go over, we are reserving the right to mute you. We want to make sure that we give everybody an equal chance to answer questions and we want to make sure. That our members get an opportunity to hear you. And so we want to make sure that everybody has an equal time. Okay, so with that. Again, thank you for so much for joining us and I would now like to introduce our two moderators. President Michelle Lee and our education chair, Dr. Sujatha Hampton. Thank you for taking this on. Over to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us and thanks, thanks to the candidates. For joining us and bringing us your platform. Sujatha?
Hi, everybody. Before we start, I wanted to just frame out what we're doing here today. And where our focus is here today. There are threats facing school boards across the nation. And we in Fairfax have not been spared. Attacks against public schools threaten our most vulnerable populations, including those that we represent here at the Fairfax NAACP. We want to support school board members who recognize these threats for what they are. And who will not appease the small minority of Fairfax County residents who seek to superimpose their agenda. Over the values represented by one Fairfax and what progress we have thus far made toward equity. We ask you to frame your answers around that central theme. Everybody understand that? Make sense? Okay, so Michelle, with no further ado, I can start asking questions. Is that okay with you? All right. And you know what? We didn't discuss how we are, what was the order? I don't even know. How we are going to do that.
I thought you were going to give us two minutes each.
Oh, yes, you know. Yeah, thank you. Yes, we're going to give you two minutes. Thank you very much for reminding me of what I should have remembered. Thank you so much. Karen, can you tell, decide the order here that they will go? In because that's one thing that I don't think that we had.
I'm moderator's choice.
Okay, so then we're going to go according to the way I see you here on my screen, which is. Hamid first, Kyle next, Ryan next, Elrung next and Lawrence last. Okay, so we'll start with Hamid. Give us your introduction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, NAACP, for giving me an opportunity to come here and speak. My name is Hamid Munir. I'm a long-time county resident and a parent of children in Fairfax County Public Schools. Who has worked to build a bright future for the children of Fairfax County through community leadership. And organizational advocacy and through consistent support of ensuring that all children have. A quality education and have both their physical and mental well-being need met. I work, I would work with the board and administration to ensure that public education provides the. Pathway to success. For academic excellence to occur, our student and staff must. Feel safe, secure and supported. I will make sure that resources are in place to include physical infrastructure and mental health support. I am an immigrant American who has overcome many challenges to earn undergrad and master's degree from George Mason University. And to become a successful IT professional. Fairfax County Public Schools gave me an education that put me on the path of success. And I'm grateful that my own children are now in Fairfax County Public Schools. I have spent my life focused on public education, health and community well-being. I have volunteered to lead multiple organizations and initiatives for our community. I have been a leader in PTA at local, regional and state level. And also at the national level. And also represents Scan, WIC and Celebrate Fairfax. I'm on their board as well. And Scan is basically Stop Child Abuse in Northern Virginia. And WIC is Ventures Community, which is an interfaith-based organization and Celebrate Fairfax is a culture-based organization. For our Fairfax. The next four years will be critically important for the Fairfax County School Board. I will continue to advocate for our children, teacher and our parent. I also want to address inequalities among our schools, working to build up schools to the highest quality level. And I will be an unwavering advocate to ensure that all of our children, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, economic status. Gender, sexual orientation, or need of special services receive a first-rate education. And I hope to support all of you and I hope that I will have your vote to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Hamid. I appreciate it. Kyle, you're up.
Here we go. Hank, thanks for having us. My name's Kyle McDaniel. I'm a proud Democrat entrepreneur pilot, but the most important thing that I do is just to be a dad to my two little girls. I decided to run for this office because of what Dr. Hampton mentioned. It's the political attacks on our schools and I think our next school board is going to have a couple of challenges. Challenges that fit in the policy bucket and challenges that fit in this political bucket. On the policy side, folks, you're not going to find much of a difference, I don't think, between the five candidates running and we. We've been to a lot of forums together, so I, we, I feel comfortable saying we're probably 95% on the same page. But the, what the message that I've been driving home since day one is we have got to be a 12-person school board team. We've got to work together. And build what I've called the Fairfax Firewall to protect our kids, to protect our parents and to protect our teachers from these political attacks because. This is not going to be a business-as-usual term on this next school board. It's going to continue to get worse. You know, I'm proud to be endorsed by Sean Perryman, the former president of this organization. And you know, when I talked to Sean, when I talked to so many others, what I hear over and over and over again is we want. School board members that listen. And when I say that I'm running to represent all of Fairfax County, I don't mean just literally at large. I mean, my job is to represent all of Fairfax County. Every pocket, every community, every neighborhood, every school from Herndon to High Bluff Valley. And I take that commitment very seriously. You know, one of the things that I want to do on day one is get out of my home pyramid of Oakton. And get into all these other pyramids, all these other regions, and I want to see everything from the good to bad to the ugly in our school systems. There's a lot of policy issues. There's a lot of inequity. There's a lot of opportunity. And I want to roll up my sleeves on day one and work hard to not only fix these policy challenges. But to be a team player to protect public education and to protect our schools. From what inevitably is going to be probably a tough four-year term. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Believe that Elrung, Elrung, we do next, I think.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Hampton. Thanks to NAACP Fairfax County Branch for hosting a today's forum. Even though five of us, you know, we have heard from each other quite a lot. During the course of our campaign, which is coming down to a final stretch. Because a online voting started today. And on May 20th, we'll know who the three endorsers will be. As Mr. McDaniel stated, there are a whole lot of differences in policy positions amongst the five of us. We are, I mean, I see my four competitors. All high-quality candidates. You know, any one of us, you know, can do a job, very good job on the next school board. But unfortunately, we can only endorse three. And as you, you know, you as a voter in upcoming a caucus. Need to make a decision as to which three will make the best enlarged team. In the upcoming November election to work with the other nine district candidates. And also on the next board to work with the other nine district board members. And, and even though there are a lot of different season policy positions. Each one of us brings a different experience and different skill set. What I bring to the table is this. 20 years of experience of having already served on the Fairfax County School Board. Three years as a chairman, three years as a vice chair. Immigrant, former ES student, grown up in extreme poverty, first to go to college. Father of two kids who graduated from excellent county public schools and a small business owner. Those experiences and institutional knowledge and unique perspectives will be very helpful on the next school board.
Thank you so much. Ryan, do you care to introduce yourself?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks Karen Sujatha and Michelle for providing us this forum. My name is Ryan McAlvin. As you may know, I served on the school board from 2012 to 2019. During a time when we significantly partnered with the NAACP on issues of concern to our communities of color in Fairfax County. Among other things at that time, we reformed student discipline. We reformed the dress code. We drafted a new SRO MOU. But the most transformative issue on which we partnered with NAACP, as I see it, was the renaming of schools after Confederate figures. On that issue, I want to dedicate part of my opening time to recognizing the work of George Albert, who was a critical bridge. Between the NAACP and the school board on this issue. And while George is no longer with us, I still have images of him sitting in the Luther Jackson Auditorium until well after midnight. Etched in my head as he made sure that the school board heard the voice of NAACP and we did. His work, I think, along with other NAACP advocates, and I see Stephen Spitz on the call as well. Resulted in the first renaming of NFCPS history. And that was from Jeb Stuart to Justice High School. As you may know, FCPS policy requires that a magisterial member partner with an at-large member in order to begin a renaming process. And I was proud to step forward as that large member alongside Sandy Evans to start that renaming process. I think that example shows how I've brought and implemented fresh progressive ideas and incorporated student and community voice into the work of. The school board throughout my career. It also shows how important the NAACP is to our community. And what an important voice it has had in our policy decisions. And that is no small part in due to its leadership over the years. But I think it's clear that our work is not done. We've had issues arise in the time since then and it is our job to ensure that everyone in Fairfax County feels represented and included.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And Lawrence, if you could.
To the members of the Fairfax County NAACP for hosting this forum today. My name is Lawrence Webb. I'm one of the candidates running for an at-large school board seat. I come to this with years of experience, lived experience of a person who worked very hard to. Being the first generation person in my family to go to college. And have taken advantage of that opportunity to. To mentor many young African-American men and women to make sure that they saw and have those opportunities to go on to college. Again, with experience, I served 12 years in elective office in the City of Falls Church prior to moving into the county. Four years on the school board, excuse me, eight years on the school board and four years on the city council. So I know how to work on, from both sides with the body that funds us. And also know how to work and negotiate to do those, those things that we all have to do. Was chair of the school board for two years in the City of Falls Church where we. I led the charge on $120 million bond to build the brand-new high school, which is now Meridian High School. As one of the last things that I did on that board was the changing of a name from. George Mason, who was the second-largest slave owner in Virginia, to now Meridian High School because. We needed that change as well. Also, Thomas Jefferson Elementary School was changed to Oak Street. Both were changed because of. Of the need to address those issues. One of my biggest issues is working with our marginalized communities to make sure that they have a voice. Many times those communities feel left out of the conversation because of educational and/or language barriers. And I want to make sure that we have those opportunities for those students. And families to make sure that they have a voice on the board. I look to be that voice for them. And thank you all for this opportunity and looking forward to questions.
Thank you so much. What we're going to do is we're going to rotate so that everybody gets a chance to be first. So I will just move to Kyle first and then we'll go like that. Okay, so Kyle. Mr. Moon, Ryan, Lawrence and Hamid brings up the rear and we'll rotate like that. Okay? Excellent. And I remind you that we're, we're asking you to frame your answers or think about. What is going to be required to make sure that we're protecting our most vulnerable. Members against the political threats that are facing school boards and certainly facing our school board and we've seen it already. So within that sort of. Knowledge, we ask you to bring your answers. Thank you very, very much. So the, the first question that I want to ask is about boundaries. Give a little background. Title I schools in Fairfax County are always. Are usually located in marginalized, underserved, low-income areas. The majority of them are located in the Mount Vernon South County area. Many of the schools' students are bused to schools outside of their communities, although there are schools within walking distance. For instance, the school, the students at Creekside Village in South County are bused to Fort Hunt Elementary. Whereas Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School is within walking distance. With the shortage of bus drivers being able to walk to school could reduce the shortage. If a child misses the bus, they do not attend school for the day because there was no way to get them there. Again, if they went to schools within their community, this would not be an issue. Additionally, having children bused many miles from their home makes it harder for parents to reach them in case of emergency. And it also impacts. Parent attendance at school events due to distance and transportation. Will you support? School redistricting to allow students to attend schools within their communities? It's been a problem that we've had. We've been kicking the can down the road around, around boundaries for a long time. So I'd love to hear you talk about that. Kyle, we'll start with you.
Right out of the gate with the tough ones, boundary is always the, boundary is the toughest thing, maybe even tougher than budget. It is, that's, that's life. I'm a very big fan of community schools for all the reasons that you mentioned. And Frank County District has the same challenges with, with Title I schools. I think you hit on the salient points. Transportation, it's also capacity. It feeds into capacity issues. But the more work that we can do to keep communities together. You know, I, because then we have the opportunities to bring in wraparound services that feeds into a host of other policy sectors as well. So. The short answer is, is yes, 100%. I agree. And inevitably, we're going to have to look at globally, county-wide boundary adjustments. At, at some point, that's just the reality because as, as we start running out of, of building capacity, we start running out of space in Fairfax County. These types of adjustments are going to have to take place.
Muted. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Moon, you.
Thank you, Dr. Hampton. That's an excellent question and also very top pointy question. Throughout the course of my 20 years of service on the school board, I had dealt with a number of very difficult boundary decisions. You know, including South County, you know, West County, Allen Derr High School, et cetera. You know, those, those boundary decision processes really bring a lot of people to the place. A auditoriums and gymnasium filled with literally thousands of parents. And community members and students who are concerned about, you know, best interests of their kids. Having said that, answer to your question is yes. Perhaps not, not on a countywide basis because that is more difficult to achieve. But I would rather go on a regional basis first. And see as far as a deciding what to use as a criteria for the boundary adjustment. Proximity, proximity. So we're talking about community school. That is at the top of the criteria. And that should remain as so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Ryan?
So just taking a step back, I think during my eight years on the school board and, and since then, I've watched as. Development decisions have been made throughout the county that have frustrated me, to be honest. These decisions have led to stark divides between haves and have-nots in our community. With some supervisor districts having a greater percentage of affordable housing than others, for example. And these kind of development patterns have essentially led to what we call socioeconomic tipping points, right? In which some of our schools and communities have a greater strain on the, on the services they can provide. And those, those are very hard, hard to overcome over time. And just one example of this is, you may know that Vienna, Virginia is. Has deep roots as a, as a black community before being turned over to white government workers fleeing the city. So there is a lot rooted in our county's history that we have to overcome. And I think with, specific to redistricting, I do support redistricting so that communities can be together in a school. We talk about community schools, which in this sense has multiple meanings. It's not only about providing the wraparound services, you know, whether public health, other things to make sure that our students have access to all sorts of government resources in one place, but also to make sure that they are going to school with their peers in their community and not being bused for hours. So yes, I would support redistricting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Lawrence?
Yes, this is one of, will always be one of the most challenging issues that comes before the board because it has a direct impact on students and families. However, as you stated, with the number of Title I schools that are particularly in the Mount Vernon and the Franconia area, it definitely needs to be addressed that we do need to look at location-wise. That school, students should not be bused to a school when they have a school literally around the corner for them. And many times it does become those marginalized students and communities that are most impacted by that. And then again, those students are all packed into one area together versus having opportunities to attend some of the the more rigorous, their rigorous schools within the districts. So when it comes time to have those conversations, definitely that's going to be one of my number-one criterias to make sure that our students in marginalized communities are able to walk to schools and get to schools that are in their community versus being bused further away. Across the county, we need to address some of the challenges that are coming with some of the the new development that's coming in because that's also causing more and more overcrowding in our schools. So that we need to reach out to the county to make sure that the profits that developers are giving are actually being used in the way and appropriate ways to help address some of those growth issues that this schools across the county are addressing. But with this point, I would 100% work to make sure marginalized students are taken into consideration as the, as redistricting comes up again.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Just for everybody's clarification, we had said one-minute answers, but our timer was set to two minutes for your introduction. So we will change it for the following question. So the next question will be back to one minute. And the, but I'm glad that you had two minutes to answer this question because it's a hard one. I know it's a hard one. So Michelle Lee and I will be going back and forth, so doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
Hold on, I'm left.
Oh.
I'm left to answer.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
No problem.
There are two minutes. I'm sure that Lenore knew that and I'm.
No, no problem.
I apologize. I'm so sorry for you. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. We're all human. We can make mistakes.
Two minutes to answer the boundary question. I apologize.
Thank you. Thank you. If you're, so if you're following my campaign, you will probably know that my children actually went to Mount Vernon High School. I was there two years ago and then I moved to the other side of the county. And I can see the disparities and the inequalities that are happening between the schools because I have seen all the Title I schools and now I'm seeing the other side of the county. So I'm a, so my answer to this is 100%, yes, I will support it. Because I've seen the inequality is, and not just by regional, but also throughout the countywide. Because I think when it comes to that, it also, there's a question of affordable housing. And I strongly believe that strategically, there are some people are placed into a certain side of the county and that's not, that's not fair. And we need to have affordable housing throughout the county and we need to make sure that the boundaries are addressed throughout the county as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much and I apologize for being confusing there. Now we will move on to the next question and President Lee will take this one.
Thank you, Dr. Hampton. Okay, so my question focuses on equity and academic access. And the question is, a little background, loading outcomes, after-school enrichment, access to AAP, advanced mathematics, AP and IBs show enormous disparity right along racial lines, no surprise there. Furthermore, as Fairfax County is racially and economically segregated and magisterial districts are themselves redlined, there is enormous disparity in offerings with districts and pyramids. We can all agree that our community is safer, healthier and more economically strong when each one of us has access to excellent opportunities. Please tell us a little bit about how you might address this issue. And we'll start with candidate Moon.
Thank you, President Lee, for an excellent question that requires more than one minute to answer, but I'm going to be very brief. I'm going to touch upon just one aspect of that. Opportunity gaps start from home and start from early years. So we need to, we need to really expand a, our pre-K program. I know that in the upcoming budget, the school board is poised to pass as 10 additional classrooms for a pre-K services. But that's only 180 students out of close to 25 hundred students who have indicated that they have not really received any pre-K services. So that pace has to be accelerated. That is way too slow. If a facility is a concern, we have to work with the county and also community, whether religious, you know, religious organizations or vacant offices could be used for purpose of providing those services.
Okay, I believe that was time. Thank you for that answer. Candidate McGelvin.
So thanks, thanks, Michelle. So Fairfax County's AAP program is kind of a balance of strengths and weaknesses. And the strengths are rooted in its recognition as an international model for gifted education with robust curriculum and strong pedagogical practices. But it's also weak in that the robust curriculum and practices have not extended to all the classrooms in the school system and have left some students behind. Over the years, I've been a strong voice for expanding AAP curriculum and practices to all of our schools. Folks may remember about eight years ago, we did a pilot program in the Region One to ensure that all those teachers were trained in these practices. And I want to make sure that all of our schools have that and teachers have that opportunity. As this group well knows, we continue to have great disparities at TJ and other programs. So we need to work on those as well.
Thank you. Candidate Webb?
Need to work hard to make sure these programs are spread around the county. We do have issues where we do see disparities of opportunities in certain areas of the county. And one of the main things that I would work to do is make sure that we do expand programs across the county. It does leave some of our students at a disadvantage. We also need to work to expand, and that's working not only the board, but working with the supervisors to get the funding that we need to make sure that pre-K is available to as many county residents as possible because that is where it gets the start of that process gets started, is at the youngest of ages to make sure that they, to get off to a great start on learning. And I will advocate on behalf of that, but then also make sure that all of our students across the county, in particular, our students from disadvantaged areas are, have opportunities across the board with education challenges.
Thank you. Candidate Minir?
Yeah, I'll talk about equity and then I'll go into the program. Every child needs to feel valued, nurtured and seen in our schools. No matter if you are new to our country or county, as I was, or come from a historically underrepresented community or struggling with learning a new language or a member of LGBTQ community or a student with disability, student must feel welcomed and included in our school classrooms and our extracurricular programs and have the opportunity to participate in advanced academic and other specialty programs, regardless of where they live in the zip codes, right? My theory is that we need to expand these programs, but also we need to have transparency of, in these programs, that how does a child get picked for these programs? There's no transparency at this time. And as a parent, I strongly feel that we need to know how the children get picked for these programs. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, candidate McDaniel.
I have the luxury of saying all of the above, but is all of the above plus my personal lens? Yeah, the first, the first thing that starts with my mind is identifying the problem, identifying the gaps, identifying what we have to fix. And it's not as easy as it sounds and it's got to be data-driven and it's got to be fact-based and it's got to be in conjunction with the community and stakeholders like this group. And fundamentally, after that, it boils down to a resource allocation issue. And again, this requires stakeholder input. You know, this, this type of, this, this type of policy development is never going to be a, there's never a silver bullet fix to this. This is going to be a long-term iterative process. And you know, what I want, my little, my one little sliver of addition to this is simply that, you know, we've got to put, we've got to find the problem, fix the problem and go back and make sure that what we've put in place is actually addressing the problems that we've identified. And that takes making, making sure this is part of the strategic plan. This also takes making sure that we, as the school board, have a performance review criteria for our leaders in the school system.
Thank you. And we heard you, even though we didn't hear you.
Thank you so much. So the next question is about special education slash discipline. Discipline incidents are on the rise and we are seeing alarming trends of students with disabilities as young as kindergarten and first grade being repeatedly suspended from school. FCPS's own data show that black students, Latino students, economically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities are up to four times more likely to be the recipients of this type of harsh discipline. How do you plan to address this disproportionality and create proactive and constructive solutions to this problem rather than reactive and punitive systems of suspensions and expulsions?
Dr. Hampton, we couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I think they timed you as well.
Look at me, going on and on. Sorry. I really apologize for that. Okay, so this is about special education and discipline. Discipline incidents are on the rise and we're seeing alarming trends of students with disabilities as young as kindergarten and first grade being repeatedly suspended from school. FCPS's own data show that black students, Latino students and economically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities are up to four times more likely to be the recipients of this type of harsh discipline. How do you plan to address this disproportionality and create proactive and constructive solutions to this problem rather than reactive and punitive systems of suspensions and expulsions for children who have, that have been shown to result in lower outcomes and which feed the school-to-prison pipeline? And we'll start with candidate McElveen.
So thanks, thank you, Sujatha. So this question is particularly timely. As everyone knows, FCPS has been under a lot of investigations from the federal government, has been subject to a lot of lawsuits in the past several years on special education. And if I may, I think that's rightly so because the system has had issues. And I think it's been a learning experience for the system to respond to things about seclusion and restraint, other issues. Looking to the future, I do think we need to look toward restorative justice as a solution here. That's not going to correct all the problems and stop the trend of, and frankly, the intersectionality between people of color and, and students with disabilities who are particularly highly susceptible to being suspended, but we have a lot of work to do.
And go on to Lawrence.
I'm going to come at this from the perspective of, of when we're talking about those students, as you highlighted, who are higher race suspension. We can't, the first thing out the gate be to suspend our way out of a disciplinary problem. We must, A, look at potential family situations and try to understand what a student's maybe background is and what's bringing some of those issues on. We also need to, again, this is where mental health counseling comes into play, that we need to, again, lower our ratios of counselors to students to have that as a, at least a starting point for that. During my time, I served for eight years on the Correctional Education Board. They oversaw all the juvenile schools in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Many of those students, some of the best and brightest students, but they came from backgrounds and situations that put them in, into those areas. But if we in the school system take the time to understand and work with those students, we can have a better turnaround.
Thank you so much. Okay, candidate Minir?
Yeah, post-COVID, there are significant concerns about discipline as some of our children returning from school face challenges of self-regulation and exhibit poor choices as bullying, fighting and classroom interruptions. We know that many of these behaviors are the result of trauma that they have faced due to COVID closures and challenges resulting from family members being ill, losing jobs or possibility of food insecurity. Oftentimes, poor behaviors is a sign that these students are calling for help. Teachers need to be supported in creating a safe space for all. I support the emphasis on social-emotional learning so that our students gain the essential life skill of learning, working and living in a community setting. In instances where parents have been called multiple times about a student behavior, I support a policy of utilizing a functional behavior assessment and implementation of the behavior intervention plan, working closely with their parents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kyle?
So to kind of refocus this back on special education, the intersection there with discipline. You know, I cringe at the thought of a kindergartner or a first grader or a second grader or a third grader or like me, a fourth grader when I was suspended, of kids that young being suspended. To elicit behavior, we have carrots and sticks. And I think it's really easy to take the stick model of behavior modification. We've got to build out that carrot, that carrot model better. I've been talking about this. You know, especially in special education, acting out this behavior is communication that a need is not being met. So we have to look at it through that lens and we have to address it through that lens. And that takes training with staff, that takes special education teachers. I could go on and on and on about how we don't have enough special education teachers. But it takes, we've got to focus it on the fact that this is not acting out, this is not a bad kid. This is a kid whose needs are not being met and we, as a system, have to do a better job fulfilling those needs and playing that role because that's what we have, that's our, that's our goal.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Moon?
Dr. Hampton, whenever there is a disciplinary infraction by a student, we should be focusing on root causes of those infractions as opposed to consequences that students need to suffer. I mean, suspension is the last thing that we should impose upon any student incurring a disciplinary infraction. But we rather want to find out why students has done such, has committed such behaviors, whether it is a peer relationship issues, whether student is getting frustrated with what is being taught in the classroom or a mentor stress or a family situation, et cetera. And we need to address those root causes as opposed to focusing upon consequences. For example, recently, I was having a conversation with a student who was coming to class very late and was getting disciplinary consequences for that. The reason was lockdown, lockdown.
I am so sorry to cut you off. I know that we're really trying you here with this, with this timeframe. I really appreciate it. We are getting a sense of what you think, even though the, even though the timeframe is so tight. I appreciate you sticking with it. Back to you, President Michelle.
Great. So I get to talk about libraries and access to books. So recently, Virginia PTA is considering a resolution. Actually, their annual meeting is next Saturday. And they're considering a resolution that on the outside and in first reading it seems to support school and classroom libraries and professional librarians. But there are also some stipulations to that resolution that seem to ban materials deemed sexually explicit. And if adopted, this would give enormous power to parents to exclude books like Toni Morrison's Beloved and a great deal of intersectional literature representing BIPOC people and the LGBTQ plus community. How would you protect FCPS schools, schools against this real threat? And we'll start with candidate Minir.
Thank you. I do not believe that censorship of our libraries Thank you. I do not believe that censorship of our libraries, of, of our libraries. We have trained professionals that run these libraries and identify texts that inspire our students and allow themselves to be seen. It is inappropriate for minority of voices to limit our student access to books. Our libraries allow students to opt in to read different genres and parents certainly should be encouraged to have conversation with their children about what books they are reading. There's, there's already a robust book and instruction challenging, challenge process that includes collaboration with the parents, teachers and librarians. Parents have the right to identify books that they are concerned about and there is a policy in place that, for the material review. And as far as the Virginia P T A resolution goes, you will be seeing me in the annual meeting standing against it. So you'll see.
Thank you. Candidate Webb.
First and foremost, against any type of just generic book banning. There are policies in place to review books that include not only the professionals in the libraries, but as well as parents and others. If once those books go through that review, I'm very confident that our professionals know what books are age appropriate, what should be in the library and their robust opt out policies for parents who have, who may not want their child to take part in reading those, those materials. But the few should not govern the, the many who may want their children to have those opportunities to read some of those titles that you mentioned, to learn about those, those opportunities for parents and students to talk about, explain, learn. And by limiting those, those opportunities, I don't think that's an appropriate way to do that.
Thank you for that answer. Candidate McDaniel.
So just to be very clear, I, I, I do not, I, I oppose, I do not support, I do oppose the P T A resolution. I've heard about this several times. We have a great administrative process in place in Fairfax County that needs to be stuck to. I know Carl Frisch talks about this number and I'm going to butcher it. So don't take it as gospel. Something like sixteen hundred books across Virginia, I think, or maybe the country have been pulled off shelves and in Fairfax, that number is zero. So that's a great statistic so far. Let's keep it that way. Nobody, regardless of their relationship with F C P S, no single person ought to be able to walk into a library and just yank a book off the shelf. That's, that's not how this works. Not only, and this is not only a salient issue, and I will add this, in public schools, this is a salient issue in public libraries as well. So, you know, we, we, we're focused on schools. We also have to understand that within our public library system, this takes standing with our library boards to make sure that the books aren't yanked off of shelves in, in public libraries as well.
Thank you. Candidate McKelvin.
Thanks, Michelle. And I'm so glad in your question, you mentioned the book Beloved. Because as you may know, in 2012, we faced a, the prospect of that book being banned. In our community, I was on the challenged materials review committee on that and I was proud to stand against banning that book. Luckily, we don't have too many books come forward in that process, but when we do, we need a school board that stands up and, and prevents that from happening. The key is to support our, our librarians and give them the autonomy to choose the books in their library. They, they've been trained. They have credentials and, and doing that at various age levels to determine what's appropriate, free, free from any political pushback. As, and, and in Fairfax County, we have a, a strong opt out policy. So if parents don't like it, they can opt their children out. But we don't start by predetermining what our students should get. And finally, I'll just say legislatively, we need to write letters, we need to lobby against these efforts.
Thank you. And finally, candidate Moon.
Thank you, President Lee. You know, knowing what has been already said by the other candidates, but if I may, want to add that not only do I, do I not support book banning and I support our existing policies and procedures and regulations, but also a, what happened a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago in September of 2021, when superintendent unilaterally removed a couple of books from the library. I think while the review was pending, I think that was a wrong decision. Our regulations do not permit anyone to unilaterally move the, remove the books while a review challenge is pending. And I'm not going to let that happen.
Thank you. Back to you, Doctor Hampton.
Thank you very much. I think we got a little messed up in our, in our order last time.
I apologize for that.
No problem. It's just, you know.
Thanks for no one complaining.
As is evidenced by me, I can get easily confused. And we're going to go back and I think that it was Lauren's turn to go first last time, right? So we could, is that correct? I, I think that that's correct, that it was Lawrence's turn to go first last time. So I think we're going to let it be your turn to go first this time. Okay. And then we'll go back to the same word. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay, so this is a question, it's, it's about intersectionality and, and the LGBTQ plus community. So can you speak to the challenge of supporting students intersectionally? For example, through the challenges to the book library collections and access to materials. It threatens the LGBTQ plus community most obviously, but there's an intersectional threat to BIPOC populations as well whose literature so often includes themes of sexual violence or abuse due to the history of this country and so many themes like that. This is one way the stories of black and indigenous people in particular have come under particular specific scrutiny with the divisive concept laws merging with efforts to ban books for sexual content. Can you discuss your understanding of intersectionality and how you can protect all of our students' access to representative materials and safety in school? I understand it's a lot, but we're just here, what you think about the idea of the intersectionality of our students and their identities. Lawrence.
Then, as someone who grew up in that, within that community of the LGBT community at a time where it, you had to make choices of how to, of who you were and how to protect yourself. And many times that was living in the closet. I will be the first to say that I appreciate and seeing what our LGBTQ students today are able to do of living their lives and be who they are at such a young age. And I will always be an advocate for those students, making sure that they continue to do that. Making sure, again, books and other things are out there for them to be able to, to learn and how to be and how to express themselves. Also, we'll always protect and make sure that I will be the first person protecting them in the buildings, making sure that they have the facilities that they need to identify with going to bathrooms as well as locker rooms. I've done that in Falls Church and will bring that, that experience with me here.
Thank you very much. Now to candidate Manier.
Yeah, having come from a community that is often marginalized, marginalized, I know how important it is to support marginalized communities such as LGBTQ. I will fight to protect the rights of every student and staff to be part of our community, allowing them to be their authentic self and seeing themselves in our curriculum and our libraries and ensure that every child is treated with dignity. I believe that if bigotry against one group is allowed, then it will be spread to the others. As Democrats, we need to stand up against bullies. Every child's dignity and ability to be recognized as their authentic self must be protected. I will work with the superintendents to ensure that students' pronouns are respected and private spaces are available in restroom and locker rooms facilities so that students may access those facilities and that corresponds to their gender identity. Thank you.
Thank you so much, candidate McDaniel.
Specifically with intersectionality in the LGBTQ community, I think one of the challenges that, one of the challenges that we have is many times members that were, where this intersectionality occurs, the, 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 the people don't feel comfortable coming forward. So we have to create this environment where they feel comfortable coming forward because with such a massive system that we have, it's very difficult to find and, and stamp out some of this bigotry that exists if we don't know that it exists. So we have to encourage members of that community and make it very clear that we're not just recognizing, we're act, what is recognizing that intersectionality. We, we encourage it to be talked about and we encourage it to be discussed with the LGBTQ community specifically. We don't just recognize the LGBTQ community, we celebrate the community. And Carl Frisch bringing forth the first Pride Month proclamation is an example of that. It's not just a footnote. It's still, it's a, it's a, it's a part of who they are intrinsically. And the more we can do that and the more of a welcoming, safe environment we can create, the more these challenges we can go after and proactively address.
Thank you so much. Mr. Moon.
Absolutely agree with the other, the other three gentlemen. And perhaps with the Mr. McElvin as well. You know, back in 2014, I was the one who made a motion to include sexual orientation as part of our non-discrimination policy. The year later in 2015, it was Mr. McElvin's motion to include gender identity as a part of non-discrimination policy, which I seconded and supported, stood strong against very hostile cry, crowd, meeting after meeting after meeting, even from those people I personally know in my own community. But I stood firm with, with my belief. I teach a Sunday school. A number of years ago, I had a, I had a student in my class with LGBTQ background. Students were just fine, classmates were just fine. It's a grownups who have more issues, more problems. So we need to do a little better job in educating our grownups.
Thank you so much. And candidate McElvin.
So as, as El Young said, he and I both have a long history of, of working on these issues and making sure that gender identity and sexual orientation are, are respected and, and welcomed in our school system through policy and now through regulation. And I think when we talk about LGBTQ students of color, it's, it's right to say that they're at a particular risk. And I would also add that there's an intersectionality there with students from those backgrounds that are also disabled. We know that trans youth, it's studies that show that fifty to sixty percent of them have had suicidal ideation. And that's certainly even higher for, for students with that background who are of color. And I think if we look to studies that have been done, for example, by the Trevor Project, we know that this can be addressed with mental health supports. And we need in Fairfax County to hire mental health professionals who have a focus on the needs of the LGBTQ community in particular.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the answers. I will turn it over to President Lee.
Thank you. So my question is around the acronym of 2021. Well, there are many acronyms of 2021, but one in particular, C R T. I consider the acronym of 2021. Can you explain your understanding about C R T and how the conversation has impacted our public schools? Cause it certainly has. And we'll start with candidate Webb.
It's that candidate Webb this time. I think that it's candidate.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think I did two. So now it's whoever's after me.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I appreciate your being honest and stand up. So candidate McDaniel, thank you.
No, 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 no problem.
Candidate McDaniel, then Moon. Okay, got it.
I, I, you know, I, I chucked a little bit because I knew where this question was going and the way that this issue was just taken and seized by the political right and run with, it, it's, it's laughable. I mean, it's dangerous, but it, it's laughable at the same time because it was, it, it's such a ridiculous thing what they did with that. And, and you know, all C R T, I, I, we could go through the background of it being a law school course, advanced law school course and all this kind of stuff. I mean, but fundamentally, we have to recognize that systems in this country, institutions were built on racial prejudices that run deep. That's just a fundamental recognition that has to exist. And if we're not even willing to recognize that, then what's the point of this exercise that we call the United States and democracy, in my opinion? So, you know, I'm sure all the other candidates are going to delve into this a little bit more, but you know, I, I, what they did was absurd. And the claim, the notion that we can't recognize the, the deep racism that, that has, that has transformed throughout our institutions is, it's just insane to me.
You may go next.
Yes, candidate Moon.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Agreeing with Mr. McDaniel. About what the, a political far right has done, including a couple of statewide, the Republican elected officials are doing in, 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 in Virginia is using this to their political advantages, nothing more than that. You know, as close as a couple of months ago, I saw a one prominent Republican countywide elected official already running for next, next office in two years from now. That is so sad, trying to use public education issues as a political weapon to his political advantage. And I'm not going to let that happen. I, I strongly oppose that.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll go ahead. So as others have mentioned, C R T is a concept rooted in, in legal theory. But I will say, you know, as, as an anthropology major, I did take courses in C R T in, in college and I can promise you, we aren't teaching that in our classrooms. And it's, it's been unfortunate that that's been, been said by the, the political right. And the unfortunate part of the debate, I believe, is that these issues are, are, are important nonetheless. We need to be teaching anti-racism. We need to have equity and anti-racism incorporated into our, our curriculum and program of studies. And it also prevents us from being able to expand the curriculum. We've, you know, the effort to add African American studies has been a great, great one by the current school board. And I, I'm a strong supporter of ethnic studies, which has been implemented in Florida, in Illinois and California. I think we need to do that in Virginia.
Thank you.
Is it my turn?
It's your turn.
Okay. All right. Yeah. I mean, we're all Democrats. So I mean, our answer is going to be same, same on this. You know, this whole anti-racism theory, all that came for Republicans legislators to basically do that propaganda. And we all need to stand against it. And, and I actually am with Ryan on this, that we need to have ethical studies, courses, spread across our curriculum so that people can understand all the different backgrounds, not just racism, but also based on faith, faith and, and, and other topics. So yeah, we're all going to stand on this.
Thank you.
As out, for me, this was just an opportunity of hearing something that was a legal theory and folks on the right latched on to it. It was a way for them to say, we can stop if we talk about this, we can then maybe get race and other issues brought into the forefront where people thinking we are out there trying to indoctrinate their students, making their students feel bad because we're talking about actual history and things that have happened in this country. We live in a country that has, that has had great things, but we also live in a country that we've done things that were not necessarily the best things to happen. And they happened with a particular group of, of folks. And we need to make sure that we talk about it. We make sure that it does not repeat itself because we continual to see more and more things that are happening where people of color are, are running into more and more issues and, and where it seemed like we're making, going backwards instead of forwards.
Thank you. Back to you, Doctor Hampton.
Thank you so much. The next question is about staffing. And Mr. Moon goes first, just so we all are on the same page. Uh, staffing, we currently have about sixty percent BIPOC student body and approximately eighty percent white teaching staff. We see disproportionately high numbers of black and Hispanic students represented in the discipline statistics and disproportionately low numbers of these populations in the highest academic offerings and programming, K A P, A P I B, Advanced Math. Research shows that when black students have black teachers, they're less likely to be brought up on disciplinary issues and more likely to be recommended for academically vigorous opportunities. This is an important issue for us. Will you commit to increasing our BIPOC teaching staff and retaining them? And do you have any ideas for how to do that? And we'll start with Mr. Moon.
Absolutely, absolutely. A, a Doctor Hampton. As far as whether I have a solution, that's more difficult issue. And you can perhaps, as you perhaps know that in the nationwide, there's a teacher shortage issue. A recent, our recent report from the staff shows that even though school system's goal is to have five qualified applicants for each position, each teaching position. And our baseline was three point four, but right now data shows. and our baseline was three point four, but right now data shows only one point seven. So it's going the other direction. And I have always, as a school board member, always supported a more diversifying our workforce, especially teachers, especially for male teachers of color. As you said, it is so crucial to have many of our students have someone they can look up to. Not that female teachers and our role models, but they may also relate better if they see someone looks like them and of their gender. As you know that our.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCarvin.
So I would I want to add that, you know, Mr. Moon has been a particular leader on this, and I'd like to say that I have been as well. During our last strategic planning process, we worked to make sure that we were, we had a goal of mirroring our teacher population with our student population in terms of in terms of ethnic background. We we aren't anywhere close to doing that, unfortunately. During our time on the board, we did increase significantly our outreach to HBCUs and and the teaching programs there to try for recruiting purposes. We've gone to, I think, Puerto Rico now to to recruit Latinx teachers. So the the district is doing doing a lot on this. But in terms of what we can do going forward, I know Prince George's County has had a very successful program hiring African American male teachers. And I would look to them as a model for doing that in our community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Webb.
You know what some of my fellow candidates have said. One of the big programs that I worked on while in the City of Falls Church was this very topic of working and recruiting and bringing in additional faculty and teachers of color. And one of the ways that we do that is working with partnering, not just going to HBCUs and minority serving institutions to their job fairs, but also go and work with the education departments there, creating a pipeline where those students are brought into the county to actually be student teachers there so they can kind of get a feel and understanding of the environment that they will ultimately be coming to. We need to do a better job of that. I'm on the the Human Resources Advisory Committee for the schools and we were working through our updating some policies to bring before the board, current board. That's one of the areas that we're talking about, and I have been a strong advocate of adding HBCUs and minority serving institutions as a part of that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Munir.
Yeah, I echo all of my colleagues that have mentioned, but I also want to bring in perspective of two new concepts. Not two new, but one new, but one already there. And the one new concept is that we need to tap into our internships. All the other, like if you go into medical field, if there's an internship, they get paid. You don't get paid as as much as the teachers do, but you get paid. If we tap into that and we start paying for the internship and come up with some kind of program, then those students that we are paying internship with can once become a full teacher, then come into our facilities and teach. I think that that will pretty much put a little bit of dent in this. And also, again, it goes back to affordable housing also. Is affordable housing available throughout the county or just one side of the county? Right? If we have affordable housing, we can get these teachers to come and stay and teach in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. McDaniel.
I want to bring up something. So short, short answer, yes, the teacher pool should be demographically reflective and and mirror the student pool and the county in general. I completely agree with that. We've got to do a better job, obviously, and and as, you know, Lawrence specifically brought up, building those pipelines into HBCUs and the minority representing institutions. But it also fundamentally, this boils down to what Mr. Moon brought up as well, which is a global challenge at recruiting teachers. And if we we can't address one without addressing the other, these both of these problems are married together. So when we talk about overall teacher recruitment, you know, affordable housing, the political environment in which it is to be a teacher these days, you know, a a lack of education on the great benefit that the pension system is teacher pay. We can go down the list of other structural issues as well that have to be addressed. And if we address all of these and we also blend in, you know, these various recruitment efforts and things like that, Teach for Tomorrow programs, showcasing BIPOC teachers and highlighting their experiences, we can potentially kill two birds with one stone.
Thank you very much. That's our last one, last person for that question, and I'll hand it back to President Lee.
Thank you. Well, I was brought up by parents and a grandmother who were really, really strict about manners and civility. So this next question is about civility versus justice. The current school board has caught a lot of heat for their incivility and poor decorum and infighting. How will you balance the need for good governance and collegiality with the need to do good work that supports the needs of our most educationally and economically vulnerable children, as well as those of our most privileged and academically stable children? It seems these two needs are often at odds on the current board. And I believe we're starting, I hope I'm correct, with Ryan. Okay.
So, Michelle, you're absolutely right. I mean, the current political environment has has essentially fostered incivility. It's something that Mr. Moon and I experienced beginning, well, he experienced it longer before me. But it came to a head in two thousand fifteen when we had to deal with the the effort to add gender identity to our non discrimination policy and and things have only spiraled downhill since then. I think it's critical that we have a a board that that works well together. I think my experience has shown that I've I've been a strong team player with my colleagues, working to make sure that we're modeling civility for the entire district. And frankly, we are not doing enough through our curriculum to teach, teach those values. I think we've seen after the pandemic kind of a backsliding. And we need to work on teaching students how how to behave in public, which they haven't been exposed to during the pandemic.
Thank you.
You're muted, Lawrence.
Yes.
You're still muted. There, there, there.
Okay, okay. Michelle, it's funny you say that. I too have, growing up in rural Virginia, a very involved grandmother who made sure I did what I needed to do. But with this question of civility, yes, I think, as Ryan just said, we need a board that works together. And I think one of the first things whoever walks away with these, with the endorsement, we all need to come together to begin the process of getting to know one another and working together because it's gonna be a team effort to to move forward into November to defeat the other side. During my time as Chair of the Board in the City of Falls Church on the school board, I came into that role because of some of the very challenges that you're talking about. I have a reputation of being a person who listens, who works well with others, and I took that that role very on very importantly and led a board to to a much better regaining the public trust.
It's Mr. Munir next.
Okay. I wasn't sure. So I just like, okay, is there a hint for me? But anyway, this, yeah, I mean, civility, basically, I I talk about this, I said, it comes from experience. Okay. I have an experience sitting on multiple different boards. And if you see my resume, I've I've done it several times. And you you get to know people, you get to work with people. And there is a way to bring in, if if you don't agree with something, there's a way, there's a civil way of bringing in information and then voting on it properly. So Robert's rules, civility, all they all go hand in hand together. We need to make sure that all of our board members are aware of those. Also, I talk about is diversity on the board. That can bring civility too, because not diversity just by culture, but or color, or also by profession. You need to have a diversity by profession as well. Thank you.
Now it's Mr. McDaniel.
So I I've heard this critique a lot, and I recognize it with respect to the current school board. I it teamwork, 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 same thing I've said in my in my opening, the the hundreds of opening statements I've given, this boils down to teamwork. It boils down to collaboration. It boils down to collegiality. Not just amongst each other, which is critical, but with the public and with staff and with teachers and with parents. This this cuts across, you know, a host of different relationship channels. Because if we're not professional and we're not collaborative and we're not collegial, that's gonna lead to credibility issues, and that's gonna lead to some of the issues that that this past board has been challenged with. So, you know, all the above, what everybody has said, but we just gotta talk to each other. We're all grumpy after COVID. COVID slapped everybody upside the head and it was painful. So we just give each other a little bit of grace, a little bit of dignity and some breathing room, just treat everybody a little bit more respect. We're gonna get a lot farther, and that's the goal at the end of the day.
Thank you.
That's the area where my experience is gonna be very helpful on the next board. I don't want to speak here of the current board, but focusing on the next board. My experience as the chairman of the school for three years, twenty years of experience on on the board. And and for for a number of years, I was on the minority side. And 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 even, you know, given, even during a a, in a certain period of time, that depending upon issues, I could be on the minority of opinion, or I could be on the prevailing side. But as long as you take, you respect everyone on the board and what he what she's doing is is for the best interest of those students and do not take anything personally, I think we can bring back the civility that we need. And I am a calm person. I'm a listener. I'm a uniter. I can be very helpful on the next board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We wanted to go to some questions from the chat, which you may or may not be able to see. I don't think that all of them are visible to everyone. So we do have someone who is moderating those. And Jennifer, if you're there, you can read the questions out yourself, and we can do the same, the same setup, which would be Ryan first next time.
Yes, we've had, hi, everyone. Had a question come in from someone who is not able to attend.
I can hardly hear her. I'm not sure if you all can.
Jennifer, you may want to turn your camera off, and we may be able to hear you better. Your connection's not great.
But I think what.
Can you start over, Jennifer? We couldn't, we couldn't hear you.
Let's try this.
I'm getting where that we only have time for one question. So if you scan your, now it's already three twenty two. So if you scan your questions and maybe.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great.
We only have one time for one question. So I know that there are a couple.
Yeah, I will have another one. So it's gonna be okay. So for for each candidate, what do you see are the educational gaps or weaknesses in Fairfax County? And what are our strengths?
So I'm starting. So I, this is a a very long, this could be a very long answer, but it's it's not going to be. We have one minute. We are, as I mentioned before, we're, we have a strong foundation in Fairfax County on on everything from AAP to to special needs, to to special education, to frankly, our extracurricular opportunities for our students. But we really are at a point where we need to take things to a next level. We are still operating on a pedagogical model from the the nineteen hundreds. And we we saw the the issues with that during the pandemic, where it was very hard for us to to transfer to a a virtual online environment. So I think looking to the future, we need to focus on things like coding, like artificial intelligence, things. We need to look at the jobs of the future and mirror our curriculum to to meet those challenges.
Next is is Mr. Webb.
I would agree that I think the school system has the the foundations to be a continue to have a strong overall providing the education, but there were some glaring areas that I think that came up during the pandemic. As Mr. McCarvin said, one of those was that pivot to online learning. And I think there's lots of work that still needs to be done in that area to to address the inequities of students who may come from an area of the county that may not have as strong a access to to the digital learning world. I do also feel that we need to make sure that we expand and give all opportunities to students regardless of where they live in the county, if they want access to both college readiness, but also the career readiness aspects of if a student wants to to go into the workforce and get training there from partners and internships, we need to do a better job of providing those opportunities for our students.
Next is Mr. Munir.
Yeah, I think the positive thing is Fairfax County schools are the largest, one of the largest school systems in the in the country. So everybody look up to us. With over twenty years as an IT engineer experience, I have the technological strength to help address challenges created by emerging technologies and to help make the most of the opportunities opened up by by such technologies. We need leaders on the board who will not be overwhelmed by techno babble and who can chat with the techies. We need leaders who can plan for technological change and shape it into a vision for an effective school system, rather than just reacting to and being the at the mercy of the technological disruption that we talked about earlier.
Next is Mr. McDaniel.
But I'll take more of a global view of this. I I think gaps and strengths, you know, the the strength, let me start with strengths. Strengths in Fairfax County and our public school, our teachers and our staff. Our strengths are the community and our, the support that we get from the community is overwhelming. It, we, every bond measure gets passed. It's overwhelming. Our strength is our diversity. Our strengths are our parents who give time and money and talent to supporting their kids in their schools. That's our strength. And that's the building blocks and the basis for a great school system. Our gaps, our gaps are, we have two counties in Fairfax, and that feeds into these equity issues. And and and, you know, we we have to recognize this and we have to address it. We've got the base. We have the support. We have everything that we need. We have to bring it together, school by school, region by region, pyramid by pyramid, bring it together and correct these inequities. When we do that, we're gonna have an even better school system.
Thank you, Mr. Moon.
Thank you. Basically, didoing what Mr. McDaniel has just stated. The strength of our community is Fairfax is that a our community members, parents have high expectation for high standard, high quality public education in our schools, and their willingness to support that to happen. That's a that's a major strength. The gaps we do have is ever widening opportunity and achievement gaps between those, you know, students from the families who have resources, who have parents, who have the knowledge and know how versus those who do not have resources and do not have the information, do have language barriers, et cetera. That's one area we do really gotta do a better job to reach out to families, to provide struggling families, challenged families with information and tools they need to have to better support their children at home.
Thank you so much. We had a lot of really great questions, but we have run out of time. So as I believe Karen Calvin said at the beginning, we will send you those questions because they are really excellent ones, and we'd love to hear your answers about those. I I'm trying, do we have time to do lightning round or do we not? It's three twenty eight. I have a couple of questions I can do as a lightning round, or we can close out. I have a couple of questions I can do as a lightning round or we can close out. Somebody tell me what we should do.
Let's do, because I, I would, I think it would be great if we can give the candidates an opportunity to close out.
Let's do that.
And have the closing words.
Okay, so let's drop the lightning round and.
Let's do one question for lightning round. It's a yes or no question. So it should be really easy. Do two. Yes or no? That's it. Nothing else.
I have five. Do you want to pick it, Karen?
No, no, you go. I don't have.
I'm picking. And we are going to start with Lawrence and just yes or no. Okay? All right. Will you support the current admissions process of significantly improved demographic, geographic and economic diversity at TJ, at the TJ, of the TJ student body? Yes or no, Lawrence?
Yes.
Uh, Hameed?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Um, I have one. This is my favorite one. So I'm just going to ask it. Would you commit to reading the Critical Race Theory book by Delgado and Stupanik, which I promise you is a one day read max. It's this big. So that you actually understand what CRT is and how it is being weaponized against public schools. So though you all gave really good answers, there's a lot to be learned and it's just, it's such a quick read. Would you promise to do that? We start with Hameed.
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Could you give me two?
Give you two?
Two books.
Two books. I'll give you two books and two days. Okay, Ryan?
Uh, yes, of course.
And Lawrence?
Yes.
Excellent. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I'm going to give you guys a chance to close out and we will start with candidate Munir and go through our regular order from that. And how long do we have for the close? One minute. Okay. So it'll just be five minutes over. I really appreciate it. Go ahead and close, start our closing out, Hameed.
Again, my name is Hamid Munir. I'm asking that you vote to endorse me to serve as a member at large of the Fairfax County School Board because I think it is vital that the parents' perspective have strong representation on the school board and so that we have someone who can help our schools deal with the ever-growing challenges and opportunities that come with emerging technologies. I have a child in elementary school, a child in high school and a child who graduated from public schools. I can tell you as a parent of children currently in a recently graduated, in recently or graduated recently from Fairfax County Public Schools, you get a whole new perspective of, of the schools. When you see how much of a role they play in the growth and development of your children. The perspective I got as parent is what drove me to become PTA leader at all levels and a community leader. With over, you know, before closing, I want to just share that how much this whole process has positively impacted me coming this far, talking with so many people, hearing your stories and learning from your experience has opened up so many opportunities for.
Thank you so much, Hameed. Appreciate it.
Did I, was I muted?
You just, when your timer ran out, you muted.
Oh, I, I didn't know because I was muted.
You were only muted for a few words.
Okay, no problem. No problem. Because when I looked at it, I was muted. I was like, I was talking without microphone on.
Very, very talented. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Imagine doing a whole question on mute and having absolutely no idea. Okay, Mr. McDaniel.
Thanks. So my little girls inspire me to run and the stories that I hear from parents and teachers and kids inspire me to keep running and keep fighting. You know, it's like I said, in Fairfax County, we have everything we need to take our schools from good to great, from great to excellent. And that strive, that struggle, you know, getting able, being able to play a role in that is not only exciting, it's an honor. And, and we've, we've all been down this campaign trail for the last three, four months, however long it's been. We're all agreeing on policy. We're all getting along. We all are, are saying that the next four years are going to be tough. But with the right border and the right balance, it's going to be rewarding. I can promise you that. And I'd love to have one of your top three votes. I'd, I'd settle for four. You know, if you put me five, my goal is going to be to take from five to one next go around. So Kyle McDaniel, I appreciate this. It's been really fun and, and thank you all for hosting us.
Thank you so much. Mr. Moon?
You know, a lot of people, you know, a, a, through my campaign, a lot of people ask me, why do I want to come back? After having retired in the 2019, after 20 years of service. I mean, I actually had given a lot of thought about that the last several years and came to a determination that especially with only four of the current board members running for reelection. With a lot of, you know, losing a lot of experience on the board. It'll be vital to have someone like me with a long experience, institutional knowledge and unique perspectives. The backgrounds of which I, you know, laid out in my opening statement. That we need to pick the best at large team. We need to pick the best school board members of 12. And I want to be part of that to continue providing the best possible education for our students. I am counting on your support of me in our coming caucus to be within top three. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. McElveen.
Well, thank you NAACP for hosting today. And since this is our last forum of the, before the caucus, I just want to close by thanking the other candidates. Eliang, I'm grateful for your willingness to bring back your institutional knowledge to the board. Kyle, I, I really appreciate your long history of, of public service in our county and willingness to take the next step. Hameed, thank you for all you've done as a PTA leader in, in Mount Vernon and all that great work. And Lawrence, you've always been a role model for what you've been doing in Falls Church and elsewhere. So thank you for that. And I think we have to remember now that as Democrats and contributing members to our society, we must stand up for democracy when it is under attack now. We are at a time of rising white nationalism, attacks on the communities of color. We must ensure that our schools remain inclusive and welcoming environments for all of our students. I've talked today about my progressive achievements. I believe I have the know-how to implement transformative policy, policy changes and I ask for your vote.
Thank you so much. Mr. Webb?
Thank you to the NAACP. It has been, I definitely, over the last few months, a great learning experience, getting to know many people across the county and their, their experiences within the education system here. And we have a school system that has every potential to be great. And I think we all look at that and know that. I want to bring my experience, having served prior on a school board and bring that knowledge and know-how to the county and use that because we are a school system and a overall public education is under attack. And we need to come together as a team to work hard and make sure that our students and staff are given every opportunity to provide the quality education that every student deserves, regardless of where they live in the county. With hopefully one of your three votes, top votes, I will have a chance to join the board and work with the other nine members and make Fairfax County Schools great again.
Thank you very, very much. We sincerely appreciate all of you coming out, the, the public who came to join us and certainly our candidates who came. We know we put you under a serious time constraint with the very complicated questions in a minute to answer them. I know you could have each written long dissertations on each subject and I appreciate your trying to really get the gist out and let people know what you stand for. We really, really appreciate it. Remember that you can cast, if you've registered, you can cast your votes between now and the 20th. And you should have gotten an alert about that, about that endorsement vote. We encourage you to do it sooner rather than later. And we appreciate this opportunity and in the future, we will look forward to seeing you again and working with all of you, whether you prevail or not. I know you were all dedicated to our public schools and to our community and I really appreciate that. On behalf of the branch, I thank you for coming out and for joining us tonight, for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to get that in there. Y'all were wonderful.